I know we haven't seen each other face to face in a while, but I do need everybody to sit down. Everybody grab a seat, we're about to start. Welcome to the 292nd Annual Town Meeting for the town of Westford, which also happens to be the 100th anniversary of women voting at this meeting. You, the voters here at Town Meeting constitute the legislative body of our town, and today you will vote on 23 articles, including our town budget for fiscal 2022 and various other items. Several articles are brought before you today by citizen petition. These are fashioned and put forward by your neighbors, asking you to consider certain things they believe will make our community a better place. Please pay particular attention and courtesy to them. Any registered voter can vote and speak at Town Meeting. Non-residents and those not registered to vote may observe, but generally may not speak and absolutely may not vote. I'd like to thank Town Manager Jody Ross and Town Staff, especially the custodial staff who were here before all of us wiping down the seats and making sure we had dry places to sit and stand. And all Town Staff who've worked hard to put the meeting and the agenda together in a way that makes it comfortable, safe, and interesting for us to exercise our rights and responsibilities at this meeting. That brings me to some important information. There are shade tents, may not seem like we need them now, but we may need them later, to my left, and a first aid tent as well. There are bathrooms in the back and in the Westford Academy building. Masks are not required, but please be considerate of others while moving about the field, as there are still vulnerable people among us. Before going any further, I'd like to recognize the passing of our friend Bob Herman just two weeks ago. Bob was a longtime volunteer who served Westford in many capacities. He ran his business and raised his family here for over 50 years. He frequently supplied his buses to take people from one place to another during town events, usually at no charge. He truly loved Westford, and he will be sorely missed. Now, for a few rules. You'll be voting by holding up your orange voter card, which is orange and in the shape of a rectangle. If you don't have an orange voter card, you should go back to the tellers, because it means you haven't checked in, and they'll sort you out. When I call for the vote, please put the orange voter card high, so I can see them all the way to the back. There are four microphones, which any voter can address the meeting. Hold your voter card up as you approach the microphone, so that I know you're a registered voter. We'll be working from the crackling canary annual Town Meeting booklet, which looks like this. Again, if you don't have one, they're at the back. The booklet is important, it has the wording of all the motions we'll be discussing and recommendations of the Select Board and other Town Boards. If you don't have it and want one, you can either go get it at the back or raise your hand and we'll bring you one. You can also follow along online with any smartphone or tablet connected to the internet, either by scanning the QR code on the cover of the motions booklet or also on page one of the Finance Committee booklet. Or you can just go to westfordma.gov/ATM2021. That's westfordma.gov/ATM2021. At that site, you'll find the motions booklet and various other documents relative to this meeting, although they're not as colorful, they're just in black and white there. You will also find, at that page, a menu for the food trucks that will be here at lunchtime. Yes, we're gonna have food trucks, and we'll see more about that later. As stated previously, non-voters may not address the meeting without your permission. I'd like to ask that Town Meeting allow Town employees and Town Council who are not Westford voters, but who will be participating in our discussions by virtue of their positions, to speak. Can I have a motion to allow those individuals to address the meeting? Second, before we vote, I'd like to introduce two new employees, Will Nazar, our principal assessor. Will, can you stand up, there he is over there? And Sierra Pelletier, our new assistant planner. There's Sierra right there. Okay, all in favor of allowing the Town Employees and Town Council to vote? This requires a 2/3 majority, please raise your cards. Down, please. Put your cards down, please. All opposed, raise your cards. That passes by 2/3 majority. Sorry, "to speak," my correction, "to speak at Town Meeting." Let's do that again. We're moving that the Town Employees who are not registered voters can speak at Town Meeting. Let's please put your cards up one more time. And put them down. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you for the correction, Bob. Your motions booklet has printed in it the full text of the motions we'll be voting on. In some cases, that text is quite lengthy and detailed. Rather than requiring the moderator to read every word, may I have a motion to accept the wording as it's printed in the motions booklet? Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Finally, please remember that we're outdoors, and this being New England, the weather could change at any moment. Without discouraging anyone from speaking or asking a question, I'd request that you speak expeditiously and be careful not to repeat points that have already been made. At the same time, you should always feel free to make your points succinctly and to ask a question if you're confused about any part of the process or the proceedings. And with that, we'll begin. Please turn to page four of your motions booklet, Article 1. I have a motion to accept Town Reports, is there a second? Andrea Perrin-Sweet, from Chair of the Board of Selectmen, will address the meeting. Chair of the Select Board will address the meeting.
Thank you, and good morning, everybody. Before we start the business of Town Meeting, the Select Board would like to take this moment to express our deep gratitude and appreciation to all of our Town Employees, led by our Town Manager, for all of their hard work and for going above and beyond over the last year. Through the dedication, commitment, and creativity of each and every one of you, you kept the town open and operational, and you found new ways to service us all. From virtual meetings to outdoor Town Meetings, to meetings at picnic benches at Town Hall, to meetings on Town Common, to voting in the old fire station, and even a wedding there, you found ways to get things done. Throughout this year, never did I ever hear, "We can't do that." It was always, "We will find a way," and you did. So, in no particular order of importance, because all of you were important and all of you contributed, some shout-outs and a few statistics that I thought Town Meeting would find interesting. Our IT Department, without them, led by our IT Director Mike Wells, Town Operations would have come to a grinding halt last March. Within a few weeks after Town Hall shut down, IT had enabled our staff to work remotely and securely. In the schools, under the able leadership of Gail Ansela Meddy and Julie Bredro and their staff, they enabled remote learning for thousands of students and hundreds of teachers, a truly remarkable feat. Approximately 850 meetings were held virtually over the last year, more than 1,000 hours. The IT Department hosted 250 of these meetings. Thank you to our library, led by our Library Director Ellen Rainville. With work schools and business shutdown, residents turned to our library for resources. By the end of last month, library staff had delivered over 25,000 curbside deliveries down the rear stairs, which is the equivalent of walking to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Over 8,000 children, teens, and adults attended remote, virtual, and other outdoor programs, and over 300 outdoor browse tents appointments were booked. In addition to virtual programs, book bundles, craft bags, and grab-and-go bags, total circulation for this year will surpass 300,000 items. Public libraries may be floundering somewhere, but certainly not here in Westford. Thank you to our Health Department. Under the leadership of Jeff Stevens, you had to keep up with guidelines and restrictions that seemed to change on a weekly basis. In Westford, we had 1,442 cases of COVID-19. You were charged with doing contact tracing for each one of these cases, which entailed thousands of calls by our public nurses. The Council on Aging and the Cameron Senior Center, they booked 292 vaccination appointments and provided 208 rides to varying vaccination sites. Annette Surulo, our outreach coordinator, and Robert Rafferty kept our seniors up to date through weekly email postings that reached 800 households. With the assistance of the Medical Reserve Corp., 60 households were served from last March through October, providing 250 shopping trips, ensuring that our seniors had food, their prescriptions filled, and supplies. The Council on Aging and the Westford Food Pantry delivered close to 1,000 bags of food to residents in the Westford and Chelmsford Housing Authority communities. Our Facilities Department, led by Paul Fox. Paul was in charge of finding and procuring the enormous amount of PPE needed by this town, more than $1 million worth. To our custodians and maintenance votes, thank you. You kept our buildings clean, you kept them safe, and you kept them healthy, and you have now set up three outdoor Town Meetings. To our Recreation Department, in the middle of the pandemic last summer, you ran a successful summer program, providing much-needed socialization for our youngsters and some relief for our parents. Thank you to our Parks and Recreations, excuse me, thank you to our Parks and Grounds, who made sure our recreational facilities were safe and who made modifications to the community gardens to allow our gardeners to continue to garden last year. To our DPW Water and Engineering, our roads got fixed, our roads were plowed this winter, and water main projects were completed and operations continued uninterrupted. Town Hall, you closed, you opened, you closed again, you opened again. Our Land Use Department continued to service our residents. Permits were issued and inspections continued. Our Financial Department, they didn't miss a beat. Payroll, accounts payable, taxes, and collections were all met. The Town Clerk's Office ran five elections, and our Town Clerk Patty Doobie conducted multiple weddings on Town Common and even did one in the old fire station. To our teachers, all we can say is thank you. Thank you for stepping up, for learning new ways to teach, for your flexibility and for your commitment to the education of our children. To our police, fire, and all first responders, you kept us safe, you responded to emergencies, you never shirked from your duties and responsibilities in the face of what were at times the unknown. And our dispatchers, 24/7, you were there to answer our calls. And finally, thank you to all of you and to the residents of Westford. Thank you for your patience, for your tolerance, for your support, for your kindness, for your generosity, both to one another and to our Town Employees. Thank you for your commitment to keep each other and our town safe. As we come out of this pandemic, the Select Board wishes everybody a happy, safe, enjoyable, healthy summer. Take those delayed vacations, plan those outdoor activities, get together with friends and families, and please have a great summer, because we've all earned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Erica Cole from the Clean Energy Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And thank you, Westford, for capturing your vision of a cleaner, greener future for us and for our kids at Town Meeting last October. I'm here today to let you know that Westford's leaders acted on your direction. I'm here to update you on progress made against that resolution and to let you know how you can stay informed of progress towards its goals or even be involved in that progress, should you choose. First, a reminder of what Town Meeting directed. Last October's resolution called for the promotion of clean energy, efficiency upgrades to buildings throughout Westford, renewable energy in Town contracts were feasible, a task force to define strategies for achieving net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, and briefings to the Select Board and to you, Town Meeting. In response, the Select Board established the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee and charged it with developing Westford's roadmap to net zero. The Roadmap Subcommittee within this committee has completed its initial greenhouse gas emissions inventory and created a framework for a net-zero roadmap, which will consider ways to address building emissions, energy acquisition, natural resources management, and citizen behaviors that affect greenhouse gas emissions. In addition, Westford has seen some recent successes. Among these are the application for and receipt of grants for EV charging stations in Town, the application for a grant to establish a tree inventory and to protect environmental resources that sequester carbon, and the increased use of clean energy in Town through the Power Options Program, which has provided all of us the option to easily green up our home electricity to come from an additional 50% or even 100% renewable sources for a few additional pennies per kilowatt hour. These successes cannot be attributed to the committee alone, and the distinction of shared success is critical. The successes that I just mentioned were driven by citizens both on and off of the committee by collaboration between organizations both inside and outside of Town Government. In the future, the committee will recommend methods for Westford to increase both its use of renewable energy and its efficiency in using that energy. But the implementation of those recommendations must involve understanding and buy-in from you, Westford's residents and leaders, both public and private. We will seek to understand your perspectives and to craft a roadmap that reflects those perspectives. If you would like to stay informed on or become involved with addressing the goals of last October's Town Meeting resolution, please visit the website for the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee off of the Town's website or the Roadmap Subcommittee's site at tinyurl.com.netzerowestford. You may also watch the meetings every other Monday night or visit our table at a community outreach event. We look forward to working with you and hearing from you as we create this path to a net-zero future for Westford. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. The rest of the reports can be read in the Annual Town Booklet, so there being no further verbal reports, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting the Town Reports, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And under Article 2, I have a motion to appropriate from free cash $144,202 to supplement the 2021 snow and ice budget. Is there a second? Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Under Article 3, I have a motion to appropriate from free cash the sum of $102,000 to address perchlorate contamination. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I have a motion under Article 4 to appropriate certain sums to provide for particular capital expenditures. Is there a second? You'll see on page 3 and 4 of your motions booklet a listing of articles under the first motion. I'm gonna read through them, and if anyone has a question or comment about a particular article, please say "hold" loudly, so I can hear. We'll vote on those that have no questions or comments, and then come back to the "holds." Starting at the top. $35,500 for Town Computer Replacements. $208,558 for School Computer Replacements. $200,000 for Townwide VoIP Phone System Replacement. $250,000 for Network Upgrades. $36,600 for Electronic Vote Tabulators. $50,000 for School and Safety Task Force. $17,436 for a transmitter. $14,500 for a fire alarm panel replacement at Westford Academy. $70,000 for Student Information System. $35,000 for Compressor Replacement at Westford Academy. $35,000 for Public Address System at Normandy Day School. $50,000 for Heat Pump Replacement at Normandy Day School. We'll stop there and vote on those that have no "holds." All in favor of the items that had no "holds," please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? Those pass unanimously. Well, the person who had the "hold" on the electronic vote tabulators approached the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Diane Wood, 122 Depot. It was just an explanation of what the $36,000 was for. Is this in preparation for pending discussion for special Town Meeting in the fall to actually implement, or something else? Thank you.
All right, we'll have Patty Doobie answer that. She's gonna come right up here and take my place.
Hello. The voting tabulators have nothing to do with Town Meeting. They're for elections. They're brand-new voting machines. Our current machines are 21 years old, so it's time for an upgrade.
All right. All in favor of the electronic vote tabulators, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? That passes, it's not unanimous. Moving on, that the Town appropriate from free cash the sum of $46,263, and reauthorize and transfer the sum of $123,736.52 from the Main Street Reconstruction to provide for the Westford Academy wastewater treatment plant. And further, that the Town appropriate from Water Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $45,000 for vehicle purchase and equipment. And further, that the Town appropriate from the Ambulance Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $389,000 for an ambulance purchase and equipment. Is there a second? Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? And that passes unanimously. And the second motion of Article 4, we have a motion that the Town appropriate the sum of $777,423 to purchase and equip a fire truck, to be paid for by bonding. Is there a second? Because this is a bonding issue, it requires a 2/3 majority. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your orange voter cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The article passes unanimously. We're now on the third motion of Article 4. I have a motion that the Town appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the design, engineering, and construction costs for the replacement of the Pond Brook Culvert located on Old Lowell Road. Is there a second? This is also to be paid for by bonding, and also requires a 2/3 majority. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The article passes unanimously. We're now on the fourth motion of Article 4. I have a motion that the Town appropriate from free cash the sum of $40,000 and transfer that amount to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? This motion requires a simple majority to pass. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay. We're now at Article 5. I have a motion that the Town appropriate from the sale of cemetery lot receipts, reserved in accordance with Mass General laws, the sum of $157,000 for the care, improvement, and embellishment or enlargement of the Pine Grove Cemetery. And further, that the Town appropriate the sum of $128,000 for improvements in embellishments or the enlargement of the Pine Grove Cemetery. Also. Yeah. Is there a second? The "also" is because that part is paid for by bonding. So this being a bonding requirement, it requires a 2/3 motion to pass. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? It passes unanimously. We are now at Article 6, which is the Community Preservation Funds Article. Under Article 6, the first motion is to appropriate $1,212,504 from the Community Preservation Funds in accordance with the Community Preservation Committee recommendations. Is there a second? You'll see a list on page 6 of certain appropriations. I'm gonna read through them, and again, if anybody has a "hold," please say loudly "hold," and we'll come back to that. $266,210 from Undesignated Fund Balance to the Community Housing Reserve. $190,000 from the Undesignated Fund Balance for the Conservation Trust Fund for future open space land purchases. $20,000 from the Undesignated Fund Balance for the Forge Pond Channel Improvements Project. $37,294 from Undesignated Fund Balance for the O'Brien Farm Public Footbridge. $594,000 from Undesignated Fund Balance for the design, construction, and installation of a playground at the Colonel John Robinson School. Was that a "hold"? $105,000 from Historic Resources Fund Balance for the Westford Museum Window Restoration Project. Okay, let's vote on the ones we didn't have a "hold" on. Any questions or comments for the ones we don't have a "hold" on? Are you... Are you, sir? Are you... Okay. All in favor of those that don't have a "hold," please raise your orange cards. Put them down. All opposed? Those pass unanimously. The person who had the "hold" on the construction of the playground at the Colonel John Robinson School approached the microphone.
I did. Mike Green, 11 Hidden Valley Road. Just a question, I'm in favor of the article, but I'd like to understand what are the fundraising activities that are ongoing for that project?
Is there someone who could address that question? Thank you, Bill. Bill Olson, School Superintendent.
Good morning, Mike, and good morning, everyone. There are limited fundraising activities that are ongoing now for all school playgrounds, although there are some. What we decided to do several years ago is, for the purposes of providing as much equity in terms of the nature of the playgrounds, age appropriateness, accessibility, ADA requirements, we decided to incorporate that into part of the capital plan, because we didn't want the size, and the scope, and the nature, and the quality of playgrounds to be dependent upon how successful a particular school's spaghetti supper was. And so we wanted to make sure that these were funded, because they're an extraordinarily important part of child development during each and every day. So if I didn't explain that thoroughly enough, Mike, I'll be glad to continue, but I'm glad to answer any other questions.
And at the center, microphone.
Thank you. Ellen Hardy, 39 Main Street. I have raised the question before at the town meeting about the allocation of CPA monies for recreation. It was added after town meeting approved the CPA. And I absolutely see the need for the playground. But my concern is this: When I was involved with the Roden Bush Community Center, we had playgrounds that we raised money for, and every time, we worked very hard with lots of spaghetti suppers and Westford directories, we would spend $35,000 or $40,000. And very shortly, like within five or six years, we would be told it was no longer compliant. And there would go our all beautiful playground. It would be torn down, and this time, we would have to raise $100,000 to create that playground. I worry about spending $600,000 for a playground that, in fact, may be obsolete within a decade. So my question to you, Bill, is if we made this playground half the size, if I were to make an amendment that it be $300,000, what would the implication be? Of course, the children would not have as elegant a playground, but tell me the ramifications of that amendment before I would make it, please.
Well, we would either severely cut back the scope of the playground for the students. We could possibly have to delay one of the phases. As you know, this appropriation is for rehabilitating the K-1 playground, and implementing a preschool playground, because we have the preschools at the schools. We can't, we cannot sacrifice the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and accessibility requirements, so that that would certainly be a continued part of the project. But that would, cutting the appropriation would severely cut back the nature of what the students have to take advantage of and play, keeping in mind, once again, and I know you know, Ellen, this is very important for growth, fine motor skill development, and socialization for our students also, but a severe cutback in the size and the scope.
So if we were to allocate enough money to be ADA-compatible, and to have the Phase 1 that you spoke, that it could be done in phases, what amount of money would the meeting be considering, Bill?
You know, that's a tough question. I'd probably defer to Paul, but we'd have to go back to the company that we've been working with in terms of designing the playground. It's very difficult for me, Ellen, honestly, and all of you, to give you a precise answer to that question.
Bill, let's see if Paul could answer that.
Paul?
Hello, Paul Fox, Director of Facilities. To answer the question, approximately $450,000 would be allocated to the new preschool through kindergarten playground. So if you were to allocate half of it, you could probably come up with maybe $300,000, but the playground would be significantly reduced in size and is already a pretty small size. This is a bare-bones budget.
Madam Moderator, then I will not make an amendment at this point, because I know the work that's gone into this, but I will say that I would like to be present at the meetings go forward as this is designed, and see if there's some way that perhaps we don't expend the entire allocation and just work from there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellen. Erica?
Erica Cole for Francis Hill Road. I did have a question. Ellen reminded me of the discussions that we've had previously regarding the use of CPA funds for recreational purposes, and this is a very large number. And I think most of us who voted on the CPA funds originally were envisioning, you know, open spaces and affordable housing and the things that were listed at the time. And I was hoping that someone might address what the considerations were for using CPA funds, and whether or not there was any consideration given to other funding sources.
I see Marilyn Frank approaching the microphone. Marilyn, tell everybody who you are.
Marilyn Frank, 6 Chamberlain Road.
And in what capacity you're speaking?
I'm a vice chair of the CPC, and I would say to you that I've been a member of CPC before its inception, when we were thinking about it in Westford, and when people worked very hard to make this happen. So I have been on the CPC committee itself for 21 years. This is an appropriate use of funds for CPC. I had been a teacher at Robinson School. I retired after 29 years of teaching at Frost and Robinson. That school needs this. Those children need this. It is absolutely appropriate to spend money on recreation as well as open space. I think you will find in our 21 years that we have balanced all of these issues, and I would ask this audience today to fully fund it. Those children need it. We need to make sure that schools are equitable in the leisure piece, as well as in the training piece in the classroom. Thank you.
And Mark Cost.
Mark Cost, 7 Grassy Lane. I just had a question about the difference between this $600,000 and the $200 and some odd that we spent over at the day school to do its new playground. So there's a huge difference between the two. I'm just interested in why the huge cost difference.
Paul? Paul Fox, Director of Facilities.
Thank you for the question. So this budget's really broken up into two pieces. $150,000 is going to be allocated to the existing playground there. That's going to be designed for repairs and ADA accommodations to that playground. That will use approximately $450,000 for the new preschool. This new preschool will not be designed with woodchips, as we're typically used to. It will be designed with a rubberized material to make it fully ADA-compatible. That is a big cost driver to this project. Additionally, a designer will be hired to help us through all the procurement and the design specifications for the project. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Paul. Seeing no further questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes. It is not unanimous. In the second motion of Article 6, I have a motion that, miraculously, if I put my glasses on, I can read a lot better. I have a motion that the town appropriate the sum of $2 million from the Community Preservation Fund for the planning, design, development, and construction of a 35-unit mixed-income senior residential affordable housing project located at 35 Town Farm Road, including costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town appropriate the sum of $361,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance, $223,000 from the Historical Resources Fund Balance, $416,000 from the Community Housing Fund Balance, and that the town treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $1 million of said amount pursuant to Mass. General Laws or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes therefor. Is there a second? Since this involves bonding, it's going to require a two-thirds majority, and I think the presentation is going to be made by Ellen or Lynn? Is that right? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Ellen Hardy, 39 Main Street, and I am Chair of the 12-member, 35-Town Farm Task Force, which is behind this motion, with the person that you will meet in just a moment, who really is the engine driving the train. In April of 2019, the Town Farm Task Force began its work to develop a plan to save the historic Town Farm building on Town Farm Road. In November of 2020, a plan was presented to the Select Board, and the Select Board adopted that plan unanimously. It is a bold plan. A request for proposals was issued by the town to implement the plan, and in January of 2021, the Select Board accepted the bid from Choice Chelmsford Based Housing Nonprofit. Choice will bear the expense of renovating the historic building at 35 Town Farm Road. On the first floor will be the new home for the Westford Food Pantry, now housed in the basement of the Cameron Senior Center, and there will be five apartments on the upper floors. New construction at the back of the original 1837 building will provide 30 truly affordable senior housing units on this site. Choice's total budget for the Town Farm project is approximately $18 million. Our share will be $2 million, and that's what's before you today. The Town Farm Task Force strongly urges you to vote yes on appropriating the CPC contribution of $2 million. This crucial vote will demonstrate the town's commitment to the project, and will show the other investors who will be asked for the rest of the project funding that the town is in support and is willing to be an investor and a partner. In addition, the $2 million will assure that the historic integrity of the 19th-century building, one of the last town-owned town farms in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, will be preserved. When all the funding has been granted and all the permitting has occurred, a purchase and sale agreement will be executed, probably in the fall of 2024. And the CPC funds will not be expended until then, but are needed now for the reasons mentioned. Madam Moderator, I would like to make a motion that the town meeting allow a non-voter and non-resident to speak. David Hettison, to my right, is Executive Director of Choice, and I think his explanation of his vision for this project will allow the town meeting to make a very informed vote. So my motion is to allow Mr. Hettison to address this meeting, please.
Is there a second? All those in favor of allowing the non-voter to speak, please raise your cards. Put them down. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is David Hettison, and I am the Director of the Chelmsford Housing Authority and with Choice, Inc. I've been there for 34 years. Housing has been my passion. Caring for our residents is my passion. And when this project came forward from the community of Westford, we really jumped at the opportunity to create truly affordable housing in the town of Westford. The town of Westford has been incredibly generous with the support of the Helena Crocker Development on Littleton Road, which we should be receiving funding by the end of this summer. We're looking for $2 million from Community Preservation to move forward on this project, and we're going to match that $2 million of local funds with an additional $16 million of your state and federal money. We're going to bring that back to Westford, and for me, that's an amazing thing. I can talk dollars, but let's talk people. Some of us and some of our relatives are fortunate to have very large savings or very large assets and live out their golden years in a fancy retirement community, accessing all the services and needs they want. In my position at Chelmsford Housing, we serve a number of Westford families and seniors. These are individuals of moderate income and many of lower income. 35 units is going to be a lifesaver to the residents of Westford that are waiting at least five years or more. And I always say, when a resident comes in at 75-years-old, and we look at them in the face, in their face, and say, "You need housing today?" Well, it's maybe around your 80th birthday, we'll have a place for you to call home. For me, it's almost giving a death sentence. But instead, today, we have an opportunity to offer hope. Offer hope to those that need senior housing, giving them a place where they can age in place. We coordinate services, so I say, as Mary moves in, healthy, active, going to the Cameron Senior Center every day, as she ages, has hip replacement, may have other chronic illnesses, we are there to help her, access resources, to stay in a place that she calls home, next to the neighbors that she has made. So it is a big ask, $2 million, but you're not only giving money for a building, you're giving money for the community to take care of our seniors. So I'll end with that, because I could talk for two hours, and that would not be appropriate.
Nor allowed. Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments? Yes?
Laura Dickey, Voshill Road. I am speaking on behalf of the Westford League of Women Voters to express our strong support for the $2 million appropriation by the CPC to help create affordable housing at 35 Town Farm Road. In 2005, the League studied the issues of affordable housing and created a position that states that our belief that all people have a right to safe, decent, and adequate housing, we specifically advocate for affordable housing types which address the changing space and economic needs for seniors. The need for affordable housing in Westford for our seniors is clear and undeniable. This project will help us, as a community, provide support to those seniors who wish to continue to live in Westford. The League of Women Voters urges you to vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Emily?
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I just have a question on the language. Four lines from the bottom or three? It says a grant agreement with the developer and also a private appropriate deed restriction. Could somebody explain those two words, phrases? It's hard to talk with this feedback.
Can you answer those questions? Is there somebody that can answer?
So I can, if I may, Madam. So the grant agreement, so first of all, this award, if town meeting approves this, there is an agreement in place that we will not be accessing any of these funds until we're closing on the property. So there's a number of, and you can share, Ellen, that we've always, I've always said, I don't want to be ever asking for funding without performing. So the agreement would be in place that even though town meeting could approve it today, we will not have access to those funds until certain conditions are met. So there is, as you said, a grant, I need my glasses or don't need my glasses. That is what the grant agreement is speaking to. Then, the other question you had was regarding the deed restrictions.
So the grants are the state and federal money?
No, it's this money.
Oh, okay.
And in terms of the terms of the restriction, Emily, there will be historic restrictions on the 1837 building and the white building next to it, which was built in 1903. We have had members of the historic commission on the 35 Town Farm Road Task Force, and they have gone through that building and meticulously identified the features of that building that are still there that make it so unique, the stairwells, the hardware that's there, the windows. That must be retained. Choice may not change that. So that from Town Farm Road, and as you walk into the building, the features that are there now will still be there, even when it is the home for the food pantry and when it is apartments. So that restriction refers to his- So that restriction refers to historic restrictions that will be on the building in perpetuity.
And will there be elevators for the second floor?
Of course, yes.
Cool.
Two, says David.
The microphone to my right. Kathy Lynch, Rush Road. I have a question, and that is that I think the demand is much higher than the availability for this affordable senior housing. And I just wanted to know, how will you determine who those 35 people will be that have access to that?
I can respond to that. So part of the agreement is, we're here today asking for the $2 million. In order to qualify for the other $16 million from the state and federal government, we have to actually submit to the state affirmative fear housing marketing plan, which includes a lottery. That lottery will provide for up to 70% of the applicants or units, applicants will receive 70% of the Westford residents, no, let me say this again. Where there's going to be a lottery, 70% of the units shall be designated for Westford residents. So to make things very simple, if there's 100 people who are applying, Westford residents, we'd be put into the first fishbowl. 70% of the units will be designated from that fishbowl. The other fishbowl will be for the 30% of open units. That could be all Westford residents as well. So we usually see that through this drawing, more than 70% end up being local residents, and the ones that are not selected remain on the waiting list. But then, because they have applied, we know who they are, we know where they live, we can reach out to them for the other opportunities that our organization has.
Thank you.
At the center microphone?
Yep. Hi, Liz Sherry, 10 Kalamore Drive. I'm just trying to understand who's going to own this property. Will it be the town of Westford or somebody else? And then I have a couple of other questions.
So I can, so what happened was, the town, this is for me speaking as the future owner, the town, the Select Board, the town had approved the disposition of the property. Choice, the nonprofit, which is part of the Chelmsford Housing Authority, is entering into a purchase and sale, and we will be purchasing the property. We're a quasi-governmental agency with an affiliated nonprofit, and we did that so we can access these $16 million. So it will not be owned by the town of Westford.
Okay, and is there a guarantee that the people, if this goes forward, the people who live there will truly be all elderly senior citizens?
Yes, it's required. The restriction will be 62 and over, and that means, so just to be clear, when we develop senior housing, it's 62 and over. So that means every household member has to be 62.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Microphone at my right.
Cheryl Longton, Daniel Drive. One question I have is, you mentioned 35 units, which seems like a lot for that property. How many floors are these buildings going to be, and how many bedrooms will be in each unit?
You know, I agree. The idea of 35 units can sound daunting, but if people can picture 400 square feet, 400 square feet in Westford in any kind of apartment building is not really that, it's not very common. So all the units are going to be 400 square feet if they're studios, and there's six studios at 400, and 29 one-bedroom units at 600 square feet. These are very modest-sized units and can't really compare to any other rental you'll find in Westford. Right now, we're looking at three stories, the third floor being part of the roof line. But one of the beautiful things is, is if the vote happens today to approve this, we still have not gone through the permitting or zoning and public input on the design and how it will look. If today does not pass, story over. If this does pass, we'll be going through a process where all the local residents, all the Westford residents, will be able to chime in on design, on size, et cetera.
And my second question is, if this goes through and the buildings are completed, and you mentioned that the Chelmsford Housing Authority, along with a not-for-profit, would be the owner, so would that mean down the road that Westford would have no ability to influence the future of the units or the property?
Not, not, that's, so I can share this. So if you're familiar with Tad McRoad, there's the Westford Public Housing on Tad McRoad. Right behind it is our building, which is Chelmsford Housing Authority and Choice. So we've already developed in Westford, and we maintain a close relationship with all the boards, with all the residents, with all the stakeholders. So the interesting part is, the Westford Housing Authority only does state public housing, while Chelmsford has access to additional state funds and federal funds. So instead of staying behind the walls in Chelmsford, I said, "Let me help bring the funds that I'm able to access to Westford." So the answer would be, we would never just not include Westford. And the deed and the language always is going to say 70% of Westford residents.
And Town Council would like to add to that.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, it's important to understand that although Choice will be the owner of this property, the town of Westford is going to hold both a historic preservation restriction and an affordable housing restriction. Those documents are recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and they are enforceable in perpetuity. So in the future, not that we would expect this, but if Choice did not comply with the age restrictions and the affordability restrictions and the historic preservation restrictions at any time in the future, the town will have standing to enforce those requirements. And that is something that will last in perpetuity, and it is the, it is a requirement of the CPA as well to have those recorded restrictions, and it is a common accepted practice throughout Massachusetts for the town to hold those restrictions in perpetuity, and that's your enforcement mechanism.
Thank you.
Emily, since you've spoken already, I'm going to ask you to let the voter behind you speak.
Edith Jochemly, 3 Fieldstone Drive. Madam Moderator, I'm just curious, with regards to creating senior residential housing, obviously, there is a need beyond just that of seniors within our community. Why was the decision made to make this senior affordable housing?
Ellen, do you want to answer that?
I can just share with you. So I'll tell you, I completely agree with you on this, the need for housing. So part of Choice is, we just finished 117 affordable family units, and we advocate for doing a whole range of housing for the disabled or abled, for families. And on this site in particular, what made me really excited about being senior housing was its close proximity to the Cameron Center, to the senior center. So for us, it was, it was something that was just going to be really exciting.
Emily?
Emily Teller, Texas Road. I believe that the building that's at the corner of Carlisle Road and Acton Road is wounded veteran housing that Choice also did. I'm in favor of this article, but I just wanted to say that Choice has had a history in Westford of doing really good things, and it's not like an outside agency coming in to help us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you miss the Santa on the Tarahaw? That's my fault.
Seeing no other comments or questions, I'll call for the vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor? Please raise your orange cards. Down, please. All opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. It's not unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Madam Moderator, following that discussion, I would like to make a motion that this town meeting accept the resolution as printed in the yellow sheet, the canary, what is the color?
Crackling canary.
Oh, I love it, okay. At the top of, at the top of page seven of your crackling canary document. This is a follow-up to what David just explained to you in terms of all of the elements of the parts of this puzzle that the Town Farm Task Force has put together in the last two years. One is the sale of the property at Town Farm Road, and actually, it should have been mentioned that Choice will be paying the town of Westford $580,000 for the property. That the buildings will be preserved, the historic buildings, there will be space for the food pantry. But the third, the fourth element, and the most challenging for us, is that sitting in the parking lot of the Town Farm is a fire department training facility. So I guess probably, Madam Moderator, the best thing to do is to make the motion and get a second, and then I will finish my comments about the resolution.
Is there a second?
Thank you. So moving that fire training facility, which is basically just a concrete tower, is imperative to David and Choice proceeding with their project. And thanks to George Murray and other members of our committee who work so diligently with the Westford Water Commissioners, we have a site for a new training facility. It's at Forge Village Road, adjacent to the current water department building. But part of our plan, and our plan being the Town Farm and what the Select Board has accepted, is that all these puzzle pieces must be put together in the right order. And one of our parts and our recommendation to the Selectmen last November was that that $580,000 that will be coming in from Choice be earmarked for the construction of the new fire facility. That's going to make it financially viable. This town meeting cannot, at this time, earmark that money. Town Council has made that clear to us, that that's state law. So what this resolution is asking this meeting to do is to recommend, to quote, encourage voters at a future town meeting to appropriate the proceeds from the sale of Town Farm Road toward the construction of a new fire training facility. As with all resolutions at town meeting, it is not binding. But what it would do would be to tell future town meetings what this town meeting on June 12th of 2021 felt about that, because without this part of the puzzle, the whole project falls apart. So we ask you to endorse this resolution, and I'm more than welcome to answer, willing to answer any questions that you have about the wording. Thank you.
At the center microphone, Laura?
Laura Dickey, Voshill Road. Again, speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters, who encourage you to support yes on this resolution. It basically demonstrates our commitment to taking all the steps necessary that will ensure the successful completion of the project and increase the, you know, amount of affordable housing for seniors. So thank you, and we encourage you to vote yes.
The microphone to my right.
Hi, Derek Lowe, Forge Village Road. I was just wondering, with this proposed resolution, whether it's specifically recommending that the town, at a future meeting, endorse the training site specifically at Forge Village Road, or rather that it is just suggesting that there, that the money be appropriated specifically for the fire training site?
Ellen?
Yes, Derek, this is only talking about the commitment of the $580,000, because that is the only vote the town meeting will be taking on this. Town meeting is the purse, holds the purse strings for the town of Westford. The decisions about what happens on the water department land rests with the water commissioners, and they have already acted on this. They voted in April of 2020 to support having that site be used for that. So that will not come back to town meeting at any point in time. If you have concerns, and I know that you are in a butter to that land, and so I honor that, certainly, there will be future meetings with the water commissioners as the plans to actually move that and site it and how it will sit on that land. Those will all be public meetings, and thank heavens, we will be actually meeting with each other in person, which will make it much easier. So that will be your opportunity for that input, but that part will not come back to this town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. This is a majority vote. If you're in favor of the resolution, please raise your orange cards. Put them down. Any opposed? The resolution passes. It is not unanimous. I have an article, a motion under Article VII to amend the wage and classification plan for the town as follows. For the Highway Superintendent, currently in band seven, with a minimum of 101,976, a mid of 115,530, and a max of 129,83. The new band will be band six, with a minimum of 88,716, a mid of 104,301, and a max of 119,886. Is there a second? Jody Ross, Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm afraid of this after last year, if you remember. So I just wanted to explain, in June of last year, we created a DPW Director, and so some of the duties from the Highway Superintendent were moved into that position, so that is why we are downgrading the band. So I just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Seeing no questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, raise your orange cards. Down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Under Article VIII, I have a motion that the town establish limitations on expenditures from revolving funds. Is there a second? I'll read through the list that's on page seven and eight of your motions booklet. Please say "hold" if you have a question on a particular item. Lease of town buildings at 65 and 73 Main Street and 170 Plain Road, $150,000. Recycling revolving fund, $20,000. Recreation field maintenance, $150,000. Senior Center fitness room, $25,000. Senior Center programs, $50,000. School parking, $80,000. School bus transportation, $800,000. East Boston Camps maintenance, $80,000. Immunization and clinical services, $60,000. Community gardens, $10,000. Town Forest Management, $25,000. And Farmers Market, $10,000. Having no holds, I'll call for the vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor? Please raise your orange cards. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're now on the town budget, which is Article IX on page eight of your booklet. I'm going to read through the fiscal year 2022 Town Meeting and FinCom recommended column of the town budget. And once again, if you have a question or comment about any particular expenditure, please say "hold" loudly so I can hear you, and we will come back to that item. So starting on page nine, with general government. Select Board, I'm sorry, before we do that, is there a second to the motion? Thank you. Select Board, $19,608. Town Manager, $433,150. Finance Committee, $133,865. Finance Department, $152,474. Town Accountant, $329,388. Board of Assessors, $342,076. Treasurer Collector, $305,328. Legal Services, $160,000. Human Resources, $413,625. Technology, $898,264. Town Clerk, $267,935. Permitting Department, $317,186. Conservation Commission, $90,883. Planning Board, $94,770. Zoning Board of Appeals, $2,405. Town Hall Maintenance, $118,642. Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, $148,386. Let's stop there and just take a vote on those. All in favor of the items red, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? Those pass unanimously. The next item is Public Safety. We are now on page 11 of your booklet. Police Department, $5,898,194. Public Safety Communications, $900,136. Fire Department, $3,897,90. Building Department, $403,174. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $3,000. Emergency Management, $11,774. Animal Control, $44,265. Tree Warden, $37,311. Westford Public Schools, $63,421,288. Public Works, $243,573. Engineering Department, $314,953. Highway Department, $2,662,820. Stormwater Management, zero. Recycling, $740,048. Solid Waste, $1440,139. It's a hold. Waste Water Treatment Management, $224,917. Cemetery Department, $139,134. Let's vote on those items that do not have a hold, which is everything except solid waste. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Down, please. All opposed? Those pass unanimously. Will the person who had the hold on the solid waste, please, yeah, approach the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Elizabeth Sawyer, Sixth Holly Lane, member of the Westford Recycling Commission. The Commission has placed this hold on solid waste because we have one area of responsibility that falls in this category, and that is to encourage diversion of waste, because it is ecologically smart, but it is financially significant. We are facing a upward trend of costs around solid waste. Now's the time for us to look at what we are trashing. We want very high, much higher on average than towns similar to us, no matter how you slice and dice us demographically. About 1 million of this 1.4-plus million we're looking to appropriate is to ash our trash. We can choose to send less and leave some of that money unspent and return here next year with an appropriation that is far lower. So we have some asks for you. Using data from the DEP, about 50% of the material that is arriving at the incinerators and the trash trucks falls in these two categories: recyclable materials, paper, metal, glass. Areas that have not changed significantly with the market changes we had to weather a few years ago. Please read the new recycling guide coming out for the fiscal year. Align your awareness of what we can recycle in our municipal buildings and at curbside with that list. One change that is an opportunity for us is yes to pizza boxes. Yes with grease. Not painted with grease, but grease. That material has value. We eat a lot of it. Let's recycle it. The other big opportunity is organics. Yard waste is not only heavy, it's banned. In addition to that $1.4 million, if we spend all that million, fines. We need to not do that. Composting is our other big opportunity. We don't have a municipal approach, but we do have a lot of support to offer for schools and households that are open to considering it. So we want to convey to you that we will be happy to meet with you on upcoming four Saturdays at the old Highway Department, Beacon Street, Graniteville, to talk with you about backyard composting. Ellen Hardy will be there. Other members of the Recycling Commission can. Is new to recycling and. Easy to undertake. We will also be selling discounted composters. If four families were to adopt composting and divert on average 10 pounds of waste per week, that is one ton alone. We aren't ashing. The other big calls to action, please consider budgeting time in your cleanouts, your redecorations, your reconstructions to rehome as much material as you can. Those bulk stickers are not offsetting our costs. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of our appropriation could be left for more compelling uses than creating ash. The Recycling Commission aims to help you. On our website, on our Facebook page, we have resources. Please look at the How to Recycle Almost Everything document. You can Google this. How to Recycle Most Everything Westford, and you'll get a 20-page PDF with area options, not only for donation, but specialized recyclers. We can take this trash that we are paying to burn, recycle some of it, compost some of it, divert it, and make that pie slice that we're paying to burn very small. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Ken Teal.
Ken Teal, 3 Beaver Dam Lane. Oh, I forgot what street I live on, 3 Beaver Dam Drive. Well, I've only been there 26 years, so we're a blow in here. I just want to say, I know we don't like to repeat things, but I want to second what Elizabeth did there. It's very important, we have all the tools within us to divert this trash, to make decisions with it, to decide what comes into our home, and then what happens once we've got it in our home. And just encourage everybody to take that responsibility. I look forward to seeing as many people as can come to see us on Saturdays, and we can demonstrate composting, and you would be amazed how much poundage actually happens from the waste food in your house. It's kind of exciting. So I look forward to seeing everybody this coming Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Seeing no other questions or discussion, I'll ask for the vote on the solid waste appropriation of $1,440,139. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now at Health and Human Services, which is page 13 of your booklet. Board of Health, $455,960. Council on Aging, $555,493. Veterans Services, $147,874. Under Culture and Recreation, Library, $1,760,760. Parks and Grounds, $288,398. Land Management, $32,266. Historical Commission, $12,650. Debt Service, $6,164,354. Otherwise Unclassified, negative $1,475,963. Employee Benefits and Miscellaneous, $19,943,747. Transfers to and from trusts, $680,957. Community Preservation Fund, $835,406. Water Enterprise, $4,655,986. Recreation Enterprise, $1,429,996. Ambulance Enterprise, $1,516,324. And Stormwater Management, $1,209,662,000. Seeing no holds to those items, I'll ask all in favor of those appropriations to raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? Those pass unanimously. I now need to ask you to go back to page eight of your motions booklet. And you'll see there that there are which are accepted from the appropriations we just approved. So I'm going to read through those, and if anyone has a hold, please let me know. $80,000 from the overlay surplus. $8,090,93 from fund balance designated for debt exclusion reduction. Sorry. What is your point of order? I'm sorry. And I had my glasses on that time. Okay. So the second number is $8,093 from fund balance designated for debt exclusion reduction. $835,406 from Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2022 revenue. $3,000 from the Senior Center Fitness Room revolving 53E and a half. $4,399,47 from Water Enterprise revenue, and $256,939 from Water Enterprise retained earnings. $1,280,100 from Recreation Enterprise revenue, and $149,896 to be raised and appropriated. From the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, $850,000 from Ambulance Enterprise revenue, and $666,324 to be raised and appropriated. From the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $817,474 from Stormwater Enterprise revenue, and $392,188 to be raised and appropriated. There are no questions on those. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Down, please. All opposed? The motion passes. Those all pass. Do you want? Yes. Jody Ross, Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to thank all of you for supporting that budget, and also all the department heads, town departments, boards and committees, school department, the board, school committee, select board, FinCom, finance committee. This was a difficult year, and we made a lot of reductions in certain budgets and held budgets firm, but it took a village, basically, to get this put together. So thank you, everybody. I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Jody. So we are now on Article 10, which is page 15 of your crackling canary motions booklet.
Angela?
Up here. Oh, Emily?
I just wanted to say, now that we're done with the budget voting, a small line item that was in there was for three hybrid vehicles that the Police Department are ordering. And I'm a member of Westford Climate Action. I just wanted to say that's a small beginning, but a significant step for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Under Article 10, I have the first motion that the town raise and appropriate from the Stormwater Enterprise the sum of $45,000 to purchase and equip a vehicle. Is there a second? Any questions or comments?
Carol Morris, 2 Wagon Trail Road. Can you tell us what kind of vehicle this is?
Can someone speak to that? What kind of vehicle it is?
Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works. This is going to be a pickup truck with a cap for the staff engineer position that we plan to hire this fiscal year. It'll be used primarily to house, you know, stormwater equipment as well as survey equipment for that position.
So is there a hybrid option on that type of vehicle?
This is going to, we are going to look at hybrid options and fuel-efficient options. We haven't decided exactly which vehicle it's going to be, but we are going to look at something that is fuel-efficient.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Under Article 11, I have a motion that the town appropriate the proceeds due to the town under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 90. Is there a second? Jody, do you want to explain what this is?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is the money that the state gives us every year to help us pave our roads and keep them in good shape. So we are just accepting it here, so we're allowed to spend it. It's around $890,000.
Seeing no questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. This requires a simple majority. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Under 12, I have a motion that the town transfer $29,511 from the Water Enterprise Other Post-Employment Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise expenses to pay for fiscal year 2022 retiree benefits. Is there a second? Any questions or comments on this? This requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Seeing no questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes. It is not unanimous, but it passes by two-thirds. It is not unanimous, but it passes by two-thirds. Under Article 13, I have a motion that the town authorize the Select Board to accept any and all easements for sidewalk drainage or other utility purposes as they may deem in the town's best interests. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. This is a very amenable group. Under Article 14, I have a motion that the town vote to amend its vote under Article 16 of the June 20, 2020 annual town meeting by adding three alternate members to the Affordable Housing Trust in addition to the 11 regular members. The three alternate members and the 11 regular members shall be appointed for staggered terms of not more than two years. Andrea Perrinous-Sweet? Is there a second?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If Town Meeting remembers, at our last town meeting, we, as a town meeting, voted to consolidate the Affordable Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust Committee. The vote by this, by Town Meeting was for 11 members, and there was no provision for three alternates. When we advertised over the past several months, we had terrific candidates who applied, and the committee decided that we did not want to say no to any of them. And so in order to accommodate all of the applicants, we voted to add three alternates. But because Town Meeting did not authorize us to do so, we have come back to Town Meeting today to ask you to please authorize us to appoint the three alternates to this committee to serve on the committee. So that is the purpose for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of this motion, please raise your cards. Put them down, please. All opposed? The motion passes. It is not unanimous. It passes by majority. Article 15 is a citizen's petition. I have a motion that the town of Westford calls upon the United States Congress to pass and send to the states for ratification an amendment to the Constitution of the United States that would firmly establish two principles. One, only non-artificial entities such as corporations are entitled to the rights and privileges guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States. And two, election spending is not free speech guaranteed by the First Amendment and is therefore subject to regulation by federal and state governments. Should the resolution pass, the Westford Town Clerk shall be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Governor Charles Baker, Attorney General Mara Healy, State Senator Edward Kennedy, State Representative James Arcero, U.S. Senator Edward Markey, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senate Majority Leader Charles Schumer, U.S. Representative Lori Trahan, and Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi. Is there a second? Is Barry Rosenberg here? Hey. I hear him. He's coming.
He has to check in first.
See, that's because we're moving so much faster than everyone expected. He started with "holy cow." You didn't hear him. No, no, you're going to go down there. Right here. There you go. Okay. Catch your breath. We're okay.
Hi. You guys are running early. Okay. First, thank you for having me. Thank you for coming. This is how democracy works. Before I present, I did participate in social media till this early this week, at which point I stopped even looking. I'd like to apologize for anyone whom I have offended, and to remind you, we are here as neighbors, not enemies. Why say money is not free speech? Since 2018, two Supreme Court decisions have ended certain limits on political donations. Individual donations by the wealthy to federal elections skyrocketed. The couple who donated $5 million in 2008 donated $218 million in 2020. By contrast, one out of 54 adults could afford to donate $200, not $200 million, in 2020. Candidates spend 40% of their time fundraising. They cannot afford to listen to you or me if we disagree with their biggest donors. Today, the wealthiest 1% have more influence on Congress than the other 99% of us combined. The Free Speech Amendment has stopped working. So has my mouth. Free speech is useless when no one listens. Limits on the wealthiest donors will give our donations more political clout. We can start electing senators and reps who do listen to us. Why reserve constitutional rights for human beings? State laws protect the legitimate functions of corporations. Constitutional rights for humans protect members of corporations. They protect members of nonprofits like Roden, Bush, and Westford Cat. For example, the Alabama and Virginia NAACP's won two Supreme Court cases for their members 60 years before Citizens United. Corporations and nonprofits use constitutional rights intended for humans to evade laws designed to protect humans. In 2001, Laurel Law Tobacco in Massachusetts won the right to advertise cigarettes within 1,000 feet of schoolyards. In 2000, the Boy Scouts of America in New Jersey won the right to discriminate against gays. Who supports the amendment that's in Article 15? 208 Massachusetts cities and towns voted for a similar constitutional amendment, including Eyre, Dunstable, Groton, Pepperell, and Townsend. The Massachusetts version, the We the People Act, had bipartisan sponsorship in the House, and Jim Arcero co-sponsored it in 2019 and 2021. The Massachusetts Citizens Commission, established by our vote in 2018, endorsed it in 2020. The U.S. version, the We the People Amendment, was co-sponsored by Lori Trahan and most of Massachusetts representatives in 2019 and 2021. 75% of Democrat and Republican voters polled want a constitutional amendment. 22 states, including Massachusetts, have petitioned Congress to overturn Citizens United. Virginia joined us this year. Supreme Court mistakes like Citizens United can only be corrected by amending the Constitution. Many of our 27 amendments were citizen responses to these mistakes. The Women's Suffrage Movement produced the Women's Right to Vote Amendment 45 years after the Supreme Court denied women the vote. If Article 15 passes, it will be sent to Massachusetts and U.S. elected officials. It will remind an unresponsive Congress that Massachusetts support of a constitutional amendment is current and growing. This is your opportunity to exercise your free speech rights and make Westford's voice heard. We can't wait 45 years to take back democracy. Please vote yes on Article 15, and thank you for your time.
Just hang around here. Are there any questions or comments? Dennis, are you saying you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I have a question on a point of water. This particular resolution basically advances the idea that we're supposed to amend our Constitution. I have a question. Should that, it's listed here that the threshold for approval is a majority vote. Should that not be a two-thirds vote from this particular body as opposed to a majority vote?
I'll ask Town Council to address that. John Giorgio, Town Council.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, if we could amend the U.S. Constitution here at Town Meeting, I have a bunch of other suggestions that I would make. But seriously, this is a non-binding resolution. It is asking Town Meeting to support the effort by the Town Clerk to send letters supporting an amendment. So it's, as any other non-binding motion, it is a simple majority vote.
Thank you. At the center, Mike?
All right. Sorry. Go ahead.
Did you have another question?
No, I'd like to speak to the amendment, to the, to the...
I'll come back to you.
Okay.
At the center microphone.
Hi, my name is Wendy Welsh, and I've been a Westford resident for 20 years. I'd like to address some of what Barry said. And actually, I think, I want to stop corruption, too. And that's why I'm against this. First of all, this isn't, this isn't about campaign contributions. So Barry's a little bit confused. There's a difference between campaign spending and campaign contributions. Contributions are already limited by Congress. we all want to stop corruption. We know that Congress is corrupt. If we give Congress the power over giving them more Monsanto, what we're doing is, Congress has the power, say, to make everything transparent. Congress has the power to say that everything should be disclosed. And they actually tried to pass a bill called the Disclose Act. And in the Disclose Act, it sounded great, right? Everything should be disclosed. Any contribution to Planned Parenthood or the NRA or whatever should be disclosed. But they exempted the NRA. They actually did that. So Congress had the power to say everything couldn't be disclosed except the NRA is exempt. Now, what if we give them power over speech? They could make a speech act. And with that speech act, they could say the NRA is exempt. They could go to their Monsanto and say, you tell me who to silence, and later give me a cushy job because the revolving door is where they really get the payoff. I'll work for you with Monsanto or some lobbying firm, and give me $5 million after I come out of Congress. We do not want Congress to have power over speech. And this isn't just about speech, corporate speech. If you read it, I don't know if you got the flyer that I give out, election spending is not guaranteed by the First Amendment and is guaranteed by federal and state governments. There's nothing in that Number Two, Second Section, that mentions corporations. Nothing. This is about our speech. This is about my speech. This is about your speech. This is dangerous. And if you got my flyer, the ECL says it's dangerous, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At the microphone to my right.
Yeah. Hi, Liz Sherry, Collmore Drive. I would like to ask the gentleman petitioner, what caused him to decide to do this?
Barry, that's a question for you.
Okay. Thank you. I decided to do this first because we have a Congress that does not respond to the people. It responds to the wealthiest donors and is forced to respond to the wealthiest donors because the wealthiest donors donate all their campaign money with very, very little donated by the average citizen. And the second reason I have done it is that corporations have the opportunity to fight laws designed to protect us. I gave one example. There are many examples because this will be a four-hour meeting, and I don't want to spend a half hour on a list. And as long as corporations, and even a nonprofit like the Boy Scouts of America, as long as they can thwart laws that protect us, the laws passed to protect us don't have teeth, so they become useless. If you have any more, I will stay by the mic. I hope that answers your...
I have a follow-up. I think it's a bit scary when we start at our level trying to amend amendments to the Constitution when hardly any of us, I'm guessing, know as much about the Constitution as the Supreme Court of the United States, who put this ruling in force. So unless all of us have a ton of time to dig more deeply into what this petition really involves and means, I think we'd all be pretty ignorant in voting for this.
Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First of all, I would like to thank Barry for giving us something interesting to talk about this morning. So thank you very much. I'm opposed to the, to the article because I believe it's misapplied and very draconian. It implies that the private sector should be demonized and the federal government is deified. There's three major corporations in the United States. Three top corporations are Walmart, Amazon, and Google. At their greatest, greatest wealth, they're $500 billion assets. They dwarf in comparison to the single greatest corporation in the, in our nation today, which is the federal government at 4.9... That same government has a monopoly over the military, intelligence collection. It has law enforcement monopoly. It has taxation monopoly. It can impact our state and local governments, and it can also, basically, it regularly tries to curry favor and influence and mold the press. Further disturbing is the fact that over the years, there's been a growth of corporatism in this country, which I think is some of the concern that Gary, Barry raises, where we now have a military-industrial complex, we have a prison complex, we have a health, education, and welfare complex, and most recently, we have big tech engaging in political censorship on behalf of some candidates as regards to Section 230 in the FCC code. So there's a very famous quote from Benito Mussolini, who says that totalitarianism is everything in the state, nothing outside the state, and nothing against the state. I don't believe this is the time for us to be rolling back our fundamental constitutional liberties. The First Amendment means nothing without your right to associate, to pool resources, to petition for things that you think are wrong or things that you think are right. You know, the last thing is simply this: Private wealth and York's civil liberties are the number-one check on the oppressive tendencies of government. If you vote for this, you're going to contribute to the idea of stripping that, those rights and tilting the balance of power towards the government, all right? Which I assure you, these laws will not be enforced uniformly. We've seen that. So what I'm suggesting that you do is not support this. Do not escalate our move from a free society to the state that Mr. Mussolini declines, described. Please vote this down. Defend your liberties. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. At the center microphone?
Madam Moderator, Elise Nacashian-Holzberg, Betty Lane. I was very confused by this wording originally, and I thought it was suggesting that, number one, corporations aren't humans, and that, number two, related to the first statement. And then I realized, as this flyer that was distributed today indicates, that these are two very separate statements. One has nothing to do with number One has nothing to do with number two, and two is a direct hit on my rights to free speech. So I would move to divide this question. I think this is a very important matter to debate and discuss and take informed votes on. So I would move to amend or divide, I think the proper terminology is divide the question, so that it's essentially the same wording. However, we simply say, would firmly establish that in the first sentence, and then a second paragraph that would say, would firmly establish that in the second sentence, without the one and the two.
Are you making a motion to amend or a motion to divide?
Divide, please. Well, I'll leave it to you to determine whether this is a division or an amendment.
No, I think you have to state it. I don't think I can make that decision for you.
Well, I've written out what I'd like to do. I'll bring it over.
All right, so we have a motion to divide the question such that there are two separate articles. One that reads, "The town of Westford calls upon the United States Congress to pass and send to the states for ratification an amendment to the Constitution of the United States that would firmly establish that only human beings, not artificial entities such as corporations, are entitled to the rights, privileges, and guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. Should the resolution pass, the Westford clerk shall be directed to send a copy of this resolution to and the same various political officials named." The second article would read, "That the town of Westford calls upon the United States Congress to pass and send to the states for ratification an amendment to the United States Constitution that would firmly establish that election spending is not free speech guaranteed by the First Amendment and is therefore subject to regulation by federal and state governments. Should the resolution pass, the Westford clerk shall be directed to send a copy of this resolution to the various officials." Is there a second?
Second.
We're going to speak to the motion to divide right now, so there'll be no comments on the underlying motion, just on whether or not it should be divided. So if the people who are speaking to the motion to divide could step up to the microphone, and those who are not speaking to that step back, I'd appreciate it. Elise, I think you can let others speak because we've just heard what you have to say.
Actually, I only made a request to divide the question, but now I'd like to speak to why we should vote for it.
Okay.
Thank you so much. As I said, these are two very significant questions. And when we debate how we're going to vote on them, hopefully I'll have an opportunity to come back and talk to that. But how corporations are treated versus how human beings are treated, I think, are two very separate questions. So I do hope folks will vote for this so that we can decide if we want to vote in unison or vote one way or the other on each. Thank you.
Barry, as the petitioner, do you want to respond to the motion to divide? You don't, I'm not requiring you to do it.
I think the entire petition, I'm not diabolically opposed to dividing it, but I think the petition, both parts imply the separation of individual human beings, individual rights, human beings maintaining First Amendment rights, and artificial entities like corporations not being human beings, not being entitled. I think that's in the article at present. No, I don't think dividing it would be horrible. And I think state and federal governments being able to put limits on it is very tied to the rights issue. Because without limits, the individual human beings, as opposed to the wealthiest, as opposed to corporations pooling used money without the permission of their stockholders to influence elections, become the overbearing controllers.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments on the motion to divide, I'll call for the vote. So if you are in favor of dividing this into two separate questions, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. If you are opposed to dividing this into two separate questions, please raise your cards. The motion fails. So we're now back to the main motion, and I think there were people who wanted to speak making their way back to the microphone. Are you, are you waiting to speak? Okay.
Hi, Kathy Ricketson, Two Randolph Circle. This has enjoyed a lot of bipartisan support. Justice John Paul Stevens, a conservative justice appointed by President Gerald Ford, made it the mission of the end of his life to lecture all over the country about the damage that the Citizens United decision had done and how it had affected our democratic process. We know with our own common sense that corporations are not people. They cannot marry, have babies, they're not born, and they don't die like we do. So we know with our common sense that they are not people, but they were given the rights of people like you and me as regular citizens. And then they were also given the right to have unregulated spending. Barry laid out the exponential rise of corporate spending. And that corporate spending had a devastating impact on both political parties. It took regulation that put those money through political parties with lots of rules away from those parties and put that money directly out there in a way that we had never seen before. So if you have ever participated in a campaign, raised money for a campaign before Citizens United and after Citizens United, you know you'd never seen anything like it in your life. And worse, we don't even know where a lot of that money came from. Did it come from overseas? Did it come from foreign governments? So the reason this has enjoyed bipartisan support is to say, as Justice Stevens said, this decision overturned 100 years of Supreme Court precedent, that corporations are not citizens. And in order to equal the playing field, we should overturn Citizens United. If the Congress would reestablish laws that would limit the kinds of money that big, powerful entities, foreign governments, dark money could interfere in our elections, great. But we are sending notice today. We individual citizens want this to be fixed, and we want to return the power of advocacy to us, the voters of the United States, of all persuasions and opinions. So I ask you, the two parts of this question are related. I hope you will support it. Send a message, as our legislature has done, as many other towns have done, supporting this to put our government on notice that we need reform of this devastating decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. At the center microphone?
Erica Cole, Francis Hill Road. I support this resolution because, like many of us, I am disturbed by the effects that Citizens United has had on our politics. The ruling asserts that money spent to amplify speech gets protected as speech. The courts also assert that corporations and other non-personal entities have the same constitutional rights as persons. These two assertions hurt my head, and they still do, at least in part because the courts redefine two English words that are crucial to our democracy to justify their actions. These words are person and speech. The courts assert that the corporation is a person, but not a dictionary around will define a corporation as a person. Not now, and not in the 1700s when the Bill of Rights was established. The courts assert that money is speech, but there is not a dictionary around that will define money as speech. Not then, not now. I'd like to address the concern that this amendment would somehow limit our rights to free speech. If you're a human, your right to free speech is unabridged. What changes is your ability to be heard above the views of moneyed interests. Money used to politically influence others gives the moneyholder a megaphone, letting them speak louder than you and be heard better than you because they have the money to buy ads, to flood the airwaves, to contribute handsomely to campaigns, and you do not. Limiting free speech rights to actual speech and not extending those rights to the megaphone makes sense to me, and it gives us all a better chance to be heard. Reversing the harmful effects of Citizens United would bring us back to a time when campaign finance reform was possible and actively being sought by Congress. Sadly, reversing those effects must require a constitutional amendment, since the Supreme Court invoked our most precious government document, our Constitution, when it redefined the English meanings of person and speech. Our only recourse is to amend that document to ensure the use of these words mean what is meant by all English-speaking people when they utter them, person and speech. Please let Westford join the 200-plus other towns in Massachusetts that have done so by voting yes on this resolution.
Thank you, Erica. At the microphone to my left?
Good morning, Madam Moderator. Al Prescott, Lakeshore Drive North. How are you today?
Good, and you, Al?
Wonderful.
Great.
Madam Moderator, I was intrigued to hear the term "common sense" used several times. It occurs to me that Thomas Paine, who created the essay "Common Sense," which most directly led to the American Revolution, would effectively have been banned from being distributed because it would be expenditure of money. But I'm not here to give a history lesson, although I'm sure at least one of my history teachers is proud that I remembered that. No, Madam Moderator, my issue is this. Let me paint a picture. Let's say that there was a powerful, charismatic politician, but I knew this person was corrupt, and I knew that America needed to know they were corrupt. So I try to put the message out there. And let's say, just for argument's sake, and this hypothetical, that that person is Donald Trump. So I try to tell everyone, hey, hey, this guy's corrupt. You can't elect this person in public office. And we all know, what's the first thing that they would do? Well, I'm probably going to sue him. There is a very powerful way to quash political speech. I'm going to sue you for defamation. I'm going to go after your home. Who do I get to pull together in my First Amendment right to association? And who wants their home taken from them? Who wants to take that level of political risk? Pretty much no one in this day and age, I can tell you. But on the other hand, what if I sat there and pulled a group of people to an association and we said, look, let's take the money necessary to communicate to America the danger of this person, and let's, let's form a corporation to do that so that we are shielded, so our homes will be safe when we come home at night? Madam Moderator, why would I want to give up that incredibly powerful and useful tool? I do not support this motion. Nobody should support the citizens' petition. Do not sit there and start giving up your rights and the tools under our Constitution. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. The center microphone?
Marion Harmon, Old Colony Drive. I support this motion. I don't think that we need to trust in the Supreme Court to make correct decisions at all times. I think the people of the United States can make these decisions, and we are more powerful than the Supreme Court. I do believe that those who have lived as long as I have here can remember the days before Citizens United and can realize that dark money has just infiltrated our politics to the point where our candidates cannot afford to run without getting enormous donations from corporations and therefore beholden to them whether or not they want to be. So I would urge you to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
And at the microphone to my right?
Kathy Lynch, Rush Road. This makes, this motion here makes the government and big corporations more powerful, not less. This article would remove corporate constitutional protection, including the Fourth Amendment, which limits Congress from unreasonably searching and seizing any corporation's funds, computers, or property. Do you really want the big corporations coming after the smaller corporations? It's going to make the smaller corporations and smaller businesses that you and I in jeopardy. It would give the power to prohibit anyone, that means you and me, from spending money to communicate, such as setting up websites or printing flyers like these that we've been handing out today. It would take that away. So I urge you, it will take away our free speech. It will weaken small businesses, and I urge you to vote no.
And at the center microphone?
Hi, my name is Wendy Welsh. I live on Tech Valley Drive, and I, I'm against this amendment. I'd like to respond to something that Barry said. He talked about cigarette companies and, like, who wants cigarettes companies to advertise to kids? Nobody wants that, right? There are already regulations that say that they can't sell them at the school. They can't advertise in a teen magazine. They can't, there's a list, right, of all of the things that corporate, that cigarettes cannot, they can't sell to minors. Those regulations are made by, I think, the FCC, the FDA, the FTC. And if we think that that corporate speech should be limited, then we already have that power to do that. All we have to do is go to the FDA or the FTC and say, hey, we want more regulations on them. So corporations already have limits to the speech that they can, that they can give. Now, I'd like to talk about what kind of corporations exist. So we have, the Westford Cat is a corporation. Roden Bush is a corporation. Actually, the town of Westford was incorporated in 1970. I don't know, somebody might know exactly when it was. But the town of Westford is a corporation. These, Kimball's Corporation. Now, these corporations don't control Congress, right? They, they are the ones that need protection from the overreach of Congress. It's the Monsanto's and Amazon and all of these enormous corporations that have their teeth into Congress.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask, I think you're repeating what you said before, so I'm just going to ask, if you would, to wrap it up.
Two seconds, yes. These enormous corporations, they don't need protection from Congress because they already control Congress. We need to protect the corporations that don't control Congress. Please vote no on 15.
Thank you. Microphone to my left?
Madam Moderator, Edith Jo Kimbley, Three Philstone Drive. I believe that this motion works to reverse Citizens United, which, to be clear, was 5-4 in the Supreme Court. And as an example, late Justice Ginsburg voted against. I'm hoping... I'm hoping that Barry could clarify the following. What added importance to sending this letter accomplish when Congressperson Jay Powell of Washington introduced this constitutional amendment on the floor of the House on April
This amendment has -- can you hear me? This amendment has been introduced several times. It has never gotten traction. The amendment has never been introduced in Senate, even though it has been introduced in the House several times. Twenty-two states have petitioned for a similar amendment to this. Congress has not listened. They are waiting for 34 states to petition, and they're waiting until their hand is forced. What this accomplishes is it reminds Congress that yet one more town supports it. And we need constant reminders because it has been 11 years. 2012 was the first time a question was posed on the ballot in Massachusetts, and almost 60 communities voted for it. In 2014, another 203 did. And nothing has changed. It is important to keep sending the message until something is done. The fact that 22 states are on record as having petitioned had no impact, okay? It's one more. Every drop helps. It's like saying, I am only one vote. Why does my vote matter? Well, if everyone says that, no one votes.
Thank you, Barry.
You can argue with the parallel, but I think it's valid.
The microphone to my right.
Raider Allen Moyer. Is the microphone on? Okay. Just a couple of points. We've been here in town meeting talking a lot about corrupted elected officials, and in the presence of our town-elected officials, I'd like to say we're probably not talking about you. On the other hand, I stand here in opposition to this motion. We've talked a lot about the definition of people. This microphone is having some problems. Be really brief. The other microphone.
Okay. In the meantime, at the center microphone.
Margaret Wheeler, 171 Depot Road. I have a question for the petitioner. For the other towns that you mentioned in Massachusetts that have already passed this resolution, was their wording exactly the same as our wording?
The deviation in the wording was that we may place limits on political spending rather than the implication that state and federal governments subject to regulation, that they have the power. It's not iffy. It's not a choice. That is the difference in wording. It weakens my argument, but your point should be public. Transparency is important. Thank you for bringing it up.
And the microphone to my left.
Madam Moderator, Arnold Price, Oak Hill Road. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, we have a motion to move the question. Is there a second? That takes -- yeah, Arnie. I'm just gonna ask, because there was somebody who was at the microphone and couldn't speak because the microphone wasn't working, if you would hold your motion until after he speaks, which I think is fair.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And the person who seconded, please withdraw your second temporarily. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
No problem. I'll be really brief. I am in opposition to this motion for a couple of reasons. We've talked a lot about the definition of a person and whether or not our Constitution gives people rights. My concern about this amendment is that it puts into the power, into the hands of government, a definition not of people but of corporations. As someone just said, your ability to form a group and spend money in an election is going to come under the control of the incumbents in government. Remember, the government is the people who are currently in power. This is an election issue, and what we're giving with this, or what we're encouraging with this, is to place into the hands of the existing incumbent officials the ability to regulate political speech, and we're taking away your ability to form a group to affect the election. We all think of corporate -- when we think of corporations in this context, we think of those evil corporations who think differently than we do, no matter what we think. Some of us think of the NRA. Some of us think of Twitter or a union. We're giving the government the ability to bring into that definition and exclude from that definition whatever groups of people the government wants to exclude. So I oppose this amendment for that reason, and I'd like you -- I'd like everyone else to oppose it, not because I necessarily disagree with the potential for non-Westford elected officials to be corrupt, but I just don't want to put in their hands yet another tool to wield their power. We have the power, and we need to retain it. This amendment, or this encouragement of an amendment, reduces our power. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnie, I'll recognize you now.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Do we have a second? Okay, so we have a motion to move the question, which takes precedence over everything. If we move the question, we'll be saying that we want to stop debate and vote on the underlying motion. So all in favor of stopping debate and voting on the underlying motion, raise your cards, Cards down? All opposed? If you want to continue debate, raise your cards. The motion passes. Sorry, raise your opposition cards again. This is a two-thirds vote required. It clearly passes with two-thirds. So now we're at the underlying motion, and I believe we've heard significant debate on this. We've terminated the debate by moving the question. So if you are in favor of approving Article 15, the motion made under Article 15, please raise your orange cards. Okay, put them down if you're opposed. I think we have to count that. All right. So that the tellers can easily count, all those in favor, please stand and hold your If you are in favor, stand and hold -- stand right where you are and hold your orange So the only good part about a count is that I get to read you cool stuff while it's going on. So this is from town meeting time. This is how voters -- how a moderator should ensure that voters behave. I have to put my glasses on. No person is to speak impertinently or beside the question, superfluously or tediously. No person is to use indecent language against the proceedings of the meeting, and no vote already passed is to be reflected on by anyone except on a motion to reconsider or rescind. No one is to disturb another during speech, except for a point of order or a question of privilege. No one is to stand up and interrupt the speaker or pass between the speaker and the moderator. Remember that. The consequences of such a measure may be reprobated in strong terms, but to arraign the motives of its advocates is against order, even though no names are mentioned. So here's what they say you should say as moderator. My right honorable friend should not develop more indignation than he can contain. So I'm gonna use that. Just think of this as exercise. All right, hands down, and you may sit. Stay here for a minute. All those opposed, please stand and raise your orange cards. Please stay standing with your cards up. Under Article 16, I have a motion to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for one additional all-alcohol package store license to be exercised by Feng Yu Inc., Is the petitioner here to make the presentation? What is your point of order?
Michael McPartlin, 14 Danley Drive. Didn't we just vote to move the question but not vote on the question?
No, we voted to move the question. That passed by a two-thirds majority. Then we had a count for the majority vote that passed the underlying motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. My fault, I didn't see you at the mic. Arnie, did you want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion to allow the -- I'd like to make a motion to allow the applicant and the attorney to speak to the motion.
The applicant and his attorney are not voters, residents, or registered voters of Westford, so we need a motion to allow them to speak. The motion requires a two-thirds majority. Is there a second? All in favor of allowing these folks to speak here at the town meeting, raise your orange cards. Down, please. All opposed? Down, all opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now you can go.
Hi, good morning. It's a great pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at the town meeting, giving presentation to the Select Board and Economic Development Committee. At the end of my presentation, I hope you will vote to support my effort to open a new and exciting business in Westford. I'm Iverson Guo. I'm the owner of the Karma Restaurant in Westford. Karma has been operated for over 14 years here, and I would like to thank -- I know this town and its demand. I feel like I'm part of this -- a member of this great community, which is why I want to contribute as much as I can as a business owner in Westford. I'm hoping to open a selected liquor store in Westford Valley Marketplace. The main product that will be focused on are Japanese and Chinese products. We hope to create a new market in the area for our specialized product. There seems to be an absence of this kind of product, and it would be beneficial to have a tier of the difference and adventure products. We hope to educate the consumer on our new product and give the consumer unique experience that are exclusive to boutique venue, like a sampling event. I think -- personally, I think it's important to educate the consumer and introduce them to their rare product, and creating the sake class and help them to selecting the rice wine, and also various other specialized presentation of the special product and experience. I'm hoping this will be a boutique store for a We hope to create a new market in the area for our specialized product. There seems to be an absence of this kind of product, and it would be beneficial to have a tier of the difference and adventure products. We hope to educate the consumer on our new product and give the consumer unique experience that are exclusive to boutique venue, like a sampling event. I think, personally, I think it's important to educate the consumer and introduce them to their rare product, and creating the sake class and help them to selecting the rice wine, and also various other specialized presentation of the special product and experience. I'm hoping this will be a boutique store for Japanese and Chinese product, not your everyday liquor store. This is another great opportunity for the town of Westford to inclusive and diverse in our local business community. I look forward to furthering my business venture in Westford and continue to be a welcome partner with the people of Westford. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Brian, did you want to speak? Okay. Are there any questions or comments about this motion? I see someone approaching the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ellen Hardy of 39 Main Street. Would the selectmen or council please clarify for the meeting? My understanding is once the town creates petitions, the legislature to add an additional liquor license, that like any other liquor license, this can be transferred to an owner in another address, another owner, and one that perhaps does not have the specialty focus that Iverson is proposing. So can this town meeting in any way target this license for this purpose in this place? Or what does state law allow us to do? Thank you.
I think I'll refer that to Town Council.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. In addition to the authority to grant an additional retail liquor license, the Special Act contains provisions that essentially do not allow the transfer of this liquor license to another entity or transfer to a different location. So it is a license that will be issued for this particular business, and that's set forth in the home rule petition that's before you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, you want to? Before we get to John?
So I just wanted to emphasize that the license can only be granted for that particular location. It can't be transferred to a different location, and it will be subject to all of the regular liquor licensing rules. So if there is a change in manager, that would have to come before the Select Board for approval. And if the, at any time if the license is not exercised at 175 Littleton Road, it has to be returned.
At the microphone to my right?
Denali Delmar, Dunstable Road, Westford. I'm confused. I thought that there was a time a few years ago that there was a liquor license in town that was not being used, and it got sold to someone else. Is that, is there some mechanism by which a liquor license can be transferred with some authority approval or something?
I think what counsel said, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, is that it can be, the license can be transferred, but with the permission of the town, and it has to be exercised in the same location. I'm sorry, misunderstood, then, go ahead.
Hi, Jody Ross, Town Manager. So we have a certain number of liquor licenses, and they're based on population. But right now, all of our packaged store licenses are being used. So the only other avenue would be if Iverson could convince one of them to sell them his license. This is his opportunity to ask town meeting whether they'll approve us seeking an additional license through the state legislature, which we have done previously for restaurants. I don't recall if we've ever done one for a package, but this is his only way to get a license other than purchasing one from someone else.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 16, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed. The motion passes, it is not unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate it.
At this time, we're going to go to the Gordon Seavey Award, and I'll introduce Bill Olson.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. And before I announce the recipient of the Gordon Seavey Award, just want to let you know that out on the table out here, we have, as we do each year, a list of the student and staff accomplishments of our terrific, terrific students and our terrific staff. As you know, we are highly ranked, and they have worked extraordinarily hard this year. And so I'd like you to be able to see some of the things that you've received for your investment of tax dollars. I think that's always helpful. Well, Gordon Seavey, as many of you know, is a highly respected, both local, regional, national, international publisher, who is also a philanthropist. Mr. Seavey had a strong passion for the profession of education and the education of the youth in Westford. And this award each year is provided to a person or persons or an organization that has provided exemplary service to the Westford Public Schools. This year, we have a committee that was established last year and consisted of about 20 members. It was our COVID Advisory Committee. I'd just like to read the names of the people on that committee. First of all, I was fortunate to be a member of that committee, along with Alicia Mallon, Dr. Andrew Papelka, Avery Adam, Bob Ware, Cheryl Carpenter, Chris Chu, Courtney Moran, Gloria Miller, Ingrid Nielsen, Eileen Tetro, Dr. James Sheehy, Jennifer Piper, Dr. Joan Egan, Joan Mitchell, Kathy Bodo, Kim Schwab, Carrie Clary, Melissa Mackey, Dr. Michelle Trivosos, Paul Fox, Shana Westerman, Sharon Cannelly, and Sue Hanley, for their outstanding service in keeping us advised on the rates of transmission, the incidence of the COVID-19 virus, the importance of our attention on the social, emotional wellness because of the anxiety that has developed in children this year, and for advising us on the school activities and really guiding us to provide safe, healthy conditions for all of our students and staff. This year's recipient of the Gordon Seavey Award is the COVID Advisory Committee of the Westford Public Schools. And any of you who are on that committee, I would invite you to come down now, and I will give you the certificate. So thank you to the entire committee, and thank you to you for supporting the committee. And since no one is willing to come forward, oh, Eileen? So Eileen and Gloria, I'm going to give you the general certificate, and I'll give you the specific. Thank you again, everyone.
I'm going to try and do one or two short more things before we go to lunch, just so we clean up as much as we can. For Article 17, there's a motion to restrict motorboats on Kai's Pond. Andrea Perrin of Sweet is going to speak to that. Is the petitioner here?
At this point in time, the Select Board is moving to dismiss this article. We did meet with the petitioner. The petitioner does know that we are making this motion. The motion itself raised several issues with respect to state law and the implementation of it. And what we have told the petitioner is that we are willing to work with him. We've also referred him to the Conservation Commission and to work with the Conservation Commission, and that we will bring this article back to fall town meeting. So the Select Board are moving to dismiss this article at this time.
So we have a motion to dismiss, is there a second? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of dismissing this article, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed. The motion to dismiss passes unanimously. Under Article 18, I have a motion to amend the town's general and zoning bylaws to reflect inclusive language. Again, Andrea Perrin, is there a second? Andrea Perrin of Sweet.
So this is, I think, the third time that we have brought this to town meeting, and hopefully the third time is a charm. In essence, this is to amend both our general bylaws and our zoning bylaws to include inclusive language, as we have talked about previously. So I know that there is one small amendment that I think the Planning Board is going to make, and Mike is walking towards the microphone right now. So I'm gonna, with the permission of the town moderator, let him make the amendment.
Recognize Mike Bonifant from the Planning Board.
Hi, good morning. Michael Bonifant, Vice Chair of the Pointing Board. Pointing Board concluded their public hearing on this proposed amendment on May 24, 2021, and voted 500 to recommend this article to town meeting with the suggestion to add the word "and" to the proposed language in Section 9.2.2.3 of the zoning bylaw. Madam Moderator, I move to amend the proposed language by inserting the word "and" in the proposed language in Section 9.2.2.3 of the zoning bylaw to read as follows.
Is there a second to the amendment? This is obviously just a minor amendment to correct grammatical issues. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of amending that part of the bylaw to add the word "and," raise your orange cards. To the sun. Put them down, please. All opposed. The amendment passes. We're now voting on the amended motion. Emily?
Emily Taylor, 9 Texas Road. I just wanted to say how grateful I am that this day has finally come to Westford. I used to sit in the front row, and inclusive language is just important because not only does language express what we're thinking, but it actually shapes what we think. So I'm just really grateful, the third time is the charm.
And Laura?
And again, Laura Dickey. And again, speaking on the Westford League of Women Voters, I actually spoke to special town meeting in 2019, fall of 2019, when we started this process, changing board of selectmen to Select Board. And now after, there's been two years of a lot of work by town officials and league members, and an update to our town charter. And this is our final, this is like the final step here is to update our bylaws to reflect inclusive language. And we believe this change is important to make it clear to all residents of Westford that they are welcome to participate in our town's governance. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion or questions, I'll call for the vote. Because this involves changes to both the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws, it requires a two-thirds majority. All in favor of the motion, please raise your orange cards. Put them down, please. All opposed. The motion passes by a two-thirds majority, it is not unanimous. Okay, under Article 19, I have a motion that the town establish municipal charges lien pursuant to the general laws, Chapter 40, Section 58, for unpaid stormwater utility fees assessed by the town pursuant to Chapter 94 of the Town of Westford general bylaws. Is there a second? Christine here to give a little explanation of this? Christine Collins. Don't rush. You've waited this long.
Feels like a long walk. So this is to allow us to place uncollected stormwater fees as a lien against the real estate tax bill. Right now, the, you understand, the stormwater is a utility fee. The water, uncollected water payments also are treated the same way. If they remain uncollected, the water department can lien them against the real estate tax bill. And a couple of years ago, we voted to allow fire alarm box fees that were uncollected to be treated in the same way. So this is just to help us to collect all that we can and treat it in the same way that other fees are treated in town. So, any questions?
At the microphone to my right?
Good morning, or afternoon, Alan Moyer, 69 Forest Road. I was sitting over there someplace when this, when the original quote got pushed through previously. I agree with the collection of the stormwater tax. I understand that we do need to separate the rainwater from sewage in many of the communities in Massachusetts. And I do agree with the collector. I kinda, I'll keep, I'll stay here. So at the risk of quoting someone, am, on the other hand, at risk of developing an indignation, not containing, over the way that this was pushed through. This is not a fee. I do not have the right to refuse this service. It is being treated as a tax. I believe it should be withdrawn and put through as a tax, subject to all of the constraints that a tax has.
What is your point of order, George? Yes, I, I'm afraid I agree because we're not discussing the underlying position of the tax or fee. We're just discussing how it's to be collected. So if you have, if you have a comment on how we're going to be collecting the tax or the proposal to collect it as part of the municipal fee, municipal lien process, you can state that.
I will be very brief. So the, for saying, I believe we should deny officials the right to place liens until after they have enacted the tax that should have been enacted previously. So I encourage you to vote no on this article. We need to be careful to retain control of town meeting. If you remember how this was pushed through.
I'm going to stop you again. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And to the left.
Dennis Galvin, 90 Conca Road, speaking as a private citizen, not as a member of the Finance Committee. Liens are typically mechanisms utilized by municipalities to compel people to pay taxes. And I'm going to say one quick thing. As the previous speaker said, this was never debated in town meeting.
No, Dennis, I stopped him, and I'm going to stop you. To my left.
Heather Fitzpatrick, Shannon Circle, also a member of the Finance Committee. During these Finance Committee meetings where we review everything, we were advised that the town had billed 15% more than it had originally anticipated collecting from its residents. That 15% That 15% was prior to non-for-profits being included, so the number will be above 15%. So for that reason, I don't feel we can put a lien on somebody when we're collecting more than the town had agreed to in the first place.
Thank you. And at the microphone to the right.
Kathy Lynch, Rush Road. I just want to say, Madam Moderator, that I object to you shutting down any conversation from our citizens here.
No.
They have a right to be heard, just like everybody else.
Excuse me, Kathy. Excuse me a moment. Excuse me a moment. It's my obligation to make sure that the conversation is relevant to the motion and the article. That's part of what my charge is as moderator, and that's what I'm doing.
Well, I just have to say, I disagree. I don't think you're allowing fair conversation. This meeting or when Sue Spohler was moderating, she shut down this conversation, and I disagree with that.
And at the center microphone.
Alyssa Nacash in Holsberg, Betty Lane. I am against this, and I hope folks will vote against this. And my reasons are, for example, we've had an ambulance enterprise fund for a while. If I recall, you know, not everybody manages to pay their fees for that ambulance ride. And we're pretty caring in this community. We don't put liens on people's houses because they couldn't afford that ambulance ride. And we don't make elderly folks feel stressed about losing their homes, about not being able to pay fees. This is a fee. We were told it wasn't a tax. It's a fee. So I would be reticent to having any of my neighbors fear that there might be a lien put on their home, and if they can't afford these fees that might mount up, they might be in risk of losing their properties. Totally against this.
And to the left.
Hello again, Madam Moderator. Al Prescott, Lakeshore Drive North. Madam Moderator, Town Meeting never voted for a tax and should not vote for a lien. Thank you.
Trying to slip something in quickly doesn't mean that it's relevant. Heather.
Sorry, one more. I should have looked at the bottom of my sheet. I noticed today on page 14 of your budget that stormwater enterprise is 1.2 million. The town is throwing in 600,000 plus the 1 million agreed, plus that overage that I mentioned in my last comment. So there's significant collections above and beyond what is needed.
Would you like to?
So just to speak a little bit to what Heather is talking about, when we were putting together the projections for the stormwater fee collections, we were using data that was completely being transformed daily by building in town and by catching up our mapping system and our overhead views of impervious surface areas. So we were using the best information that we had to estimate what the collection on the fee would be based on the impervious surfaces all over town. When it was finally completed, all the changes, the amount of impervious areas were larger than what we were basing the estimates on. But at all of those meetings, the Selectment committed to review what the fee looked like, what the collections looked like, what the needs of the stormwater management plan looked like after three years. They felt strongly that we needed a little bit of baseline before we started to make changes to what we were doing. So we are at year, not quite year one, and I'm sure that we will be reviewing all of this data when we have a little more data to go by. We had no idea even what the rate of collection would be. So, you know, we are trying to do this in a very deliberate and organized way, and we're, you know, that's all I want to say about that.
And at the center microphone.
Mark Coste, 7 Grassy Lane. So a member of the Stormwater Committee and as a former member of the Select Board, I was going to make the point that Christine just made. It was all about estimates and it was all about waiting three years. And as a result of that, my recommendation would be that we not do this lien right now, that we make it coterminous with the three years and reevaluate the payment processes that have gone on over the three years, and then come back and when there's a rate adjustment based on facts, if there's an issue with payment, that we deal with it at that point in time.
And at the microphone to my right.
Yes, hi, Liz Sherry, Kyle Moir Drive. I'm sorry if I don't know this answer, but I was wondering, are these fees -- do corporations and companies in town have to pay these fees, and then will they also have these liens if they don't pay?
At the center microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. David Sherrill, 44 Village View. I'd like to know if we don't pass this, well, how are the fees collected? Are there penalties? Do they just accrue and add up for unpaid fees?
We do have the option to charge interest. However, we have not gone forward with charging interest yet. This first year, we were particularly lenient because it is brand new, but they would have the option to collect interest. That's probably about the only enforceability for this fee, other than perhaps a small claims court type of an action, I believe.
And at the microphone to my left.
Arnie Price, Oak Hill Road. I may have missed this or misunderstood it, but without this passing, is there -- what's the mechanism for people who say just kind of don't like this stormwater fee and refuse to pay as for the people, you know, who obviously are paying?
Christine.
We should be able to charge interest, which would accrue at the time of a sale of the property. It is listed on a municipal lien certificate. So I believe that, you know, if a property transferred ownership, we would probably collect it at that time. Otherwise, we do have the right for any kind of a charge that's due to us to go to small claims court with it. So if it accumulated to a point that would make it worth it to go to small claims court, we could do something like that.
And this will be the last comment.
Eileen Tatro, my pronouns are she and her, and I'm at Oak Road. My question is, and I'm sorry if I missed it, did you say, like, as far as we've seen so far, what percentage noncompliance we're seeing with payment?
Right now, we are at 89% collected, so we have about 11% uncollected. It's made up of about 50 commercial property owners and over 700 private, you know, residences. But we'll be sending out another notice, and we would not expect the numbers to remain that high. We'll send a reminder notice. Sometimes it's just a matter of ownership changes and addresses not catching up. So, you know, to do the lien, we would not be doing it immediately after the due date. It's usually a year later that we would place a lien on anything. It would roll onto the real estate tax bill. That would give another opportunity for the homeowner to be aware of it if for some reason they were not aware of it. And then, you know, we would certainly be reasonable about, you know, taking someone's home for $37.50. I can't quite imagine me doing that or any tax collector doing that, but that would be the process. It would be something over a year old. It would be rolled onto the real estate tax bill, just like the unpaid water rates right now are added onto the real estate tax bill if they're not paid. So it's not any different than that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Seeing no further discussion or questions, I'll call for the vote. If you're in favor of this motion, please raise your orange cards. And put them down, please. If you're opposed, raise your orange cards. The motion passes with a majority. It's now just about 12 o'clock. Before you leave, a couple of things. The remaining four articles this afternoon are zoning bylaw articles. This green book, this mint-green book, which you can get a copy of back here, has all the detailed wording of any changes that are being made to zoning bylaws. So if you want to pick one of those up on your way out or on your way in, that would be helpful. Secondly, this bottle rocket blue flyer is our menus for the food trucks. So the food trucks are right out here, and I hope you'll all avail yourselves of them. They've come here today with the idea of providing some great food for us, something a little bit different. One second. Oh.
Madam Moderator, unfortunately, the Mediterranean truck is not here. He said he got pulled over by the police, so we don't know if he's -- not the Westford police, but we don't know if he's coming or not, and we apologize. Hopefully, he will get here.
Well, avail yourself of the trucks that are there. We tried to provide some interesting and different menus and affordable stuff, and the trucks have done a great job with this. It is now 12 o'clock. We'll reconvene.
Madam Moderator, good afternoon. It occurs to me some people might want to say, we're close enough. We'll set a record if we can just plow our way through the rest of this agenda.
I'm going to break for lunch, especially since we got these trucks to go. Plus, I think it's time. So it's 12 o'clock. We will reconvene at 1:30 to give you enough time if you want to leave or if you want to eat your food, and we'll see you then. Oh, is there a motion? Is there a motion to adjourn until? Oh, yes. No, 1:30, I'm sorry. 1:30, not 12:30, okay? Is there -- it's not enough time, I don't think. All right, let's say 1:15. 1:15, does that sound good? 1:15, is there a motion to that effect? All in favor? Okay, see you at 1:15.